There are rumors that have come up to the hill of a secretive project within the Department of Defense.
I've been in a Twitter war.
All of the seven guns of society to be paid more work.
Those people in the teachers' unions are Marxists, cultural Marxists, often gay.
We're trying to recruit you to tuck your penis.
If you believe in evolution, why don't you just kill people?
Then let's go fight. I'll just kick his ass. How's that?
Welcome to the Fever Swamp Review, a podcast by The Colorado Times Recorder. I'm your host, Heidi Beedle. If you're not familiar with The Colorado Times Recorder, we're a progressive online news outlet that covers politics and extremism in Colorado and across the country. You can read our reporting at coloradotimesrecorder.com and find us on Facebook, X, Blue Sky, Instagram, and now YouTube. We get a wide variety of feedback here at The Colorado Times Recorder. Reactions run the gamut from accusations of being communist propaganda and Pinochet helicopter memes to horrified outrage at the conduct of our elected officials. One thing I hear often from people who read my reporting is, "I couldn't do your job." Which is wild because, one, it's my job, man. I just, you know, it's my grind. I do it all day, every day. But, two, the things that people read in our reporting are just like the tippy-tippy top of the iceberg, you know? I know some of our critics think that I'm this die-hard Bolshevik propagandist or whatever, but there's actually a lot that I don't say, and there's a lot that gets left on the cutting room floor. In many cases, it's just not... there's just so much more out there, right? And for our regular readers who think, "Wow, this is wild," let me tell you, it gets worse. So, the point of this podcast is to bring you with us into the fever swamp that is American politics, to see what we see and hear what we hear, and then let you make your own informed decision. Some of you are probably a little fatigued with politics and elections after November, but that's too bad because 2025 is a school board election year here in Colorado. Now, I know what you might be thinking: School boards are unpaid, nonpartisan positions. Surely the stakes can't be that high. Folks, in the year of our Lord, 2025, you can't run for dog catcher without having a position on gender or DEI. During recent Senate confirmation hearings for the Secretary of Defense, one of the questions Senator Thomas Sheehy asked Pete Hegseth was, "How many genders are there?" Not, "Hey, where are all our tax dollars going?" but gender. Like other political races, there is big money in school board campaigns. Chalk Beat reported that in 2023, candidates and outside groups spent $2.2 million in Denver's school board election, according to their campaign finance reports. I reported last year on spending in Colorado Springs school board races: $48,000 for two candidates in school district 49 and $144,000 in school district 11. You might think it's ridiculous to spend six figures on a local school board race, but that's the world we live in. In races like these, money can be a deciding factor. According to the National School Board Association, a discouragingly low number of voters participate in school board elections, often 5% to 10%. According to the Center for American Progress, which, yes, is a liberal think tank, "The fact that voter turnout is low and that school board election districts are smaller in size than state or federal elections means that each vote cast is incredibly powerful, as they are often decided by small margins." For example, the Center for American Progress analyzed results for school board elections in the Commonwealth of Virginia in 2023. Of the 404 seats up for election, more than one-third were decided by fewer than 500 votes, and more than 80% were decided by fewer than 2,000 votes. And once elected, school board members can exercise a surprising amount of power over your local school district. They handle the budget, hire and fire the superintendent, and set policy for your district. In Colorado Springs, we've seen boards in districts 11, 49, and 20 flip to majority conservative, and that has brought with it changes in personnel, contracts to well-known conservatives like lawyer Suzanne Tahiri and to conservative think tank Advanced Colorado's policy analyst, Michael Soutt. Boards can also authorize charter schools, which is a huge priority for a vast number of conservative education activists. At the time of this recording, school district 11 is considering a controversial funding measure which would give $2.5 million to a new charter school that plans to serve 100 students. We'll have more on that in the coming days, by the way. The bottom line is that school board elections are big deals for local communities despite the incredibly low voter turnout. Conservative activists in Colorado are wasting no time gearing up for the November election. Earlier this month, Lori Gimmelstein, founder of the Colorado Parent Advocacy Network, who you might remember from that time she pretended to be a student questioning her gender identity in a text to a crisis line, went on the Kim Munson Show to discuss her priorities going into election season, which include unions, DEI, and trans people.
And what's so sad is that this current Board of Education, which is teacher-union-controlled, I mean, all of the school board members in Cherry Creek and most of the school districts across the state of Colorado are controlled by the teachers' union, and I don't think people realize the corruption in the teachers' union that has occurred and the amount of control that they have over what our schools do and what they teach our children. So I think it's really important because 2025 is a school board election year in the state of Colorado. We have off-year elections for school boards and municipalities, and we have an opportunity to bring common sense back into public education.
So, to clarify, the Cherry Creek School District, in addition to being one of the most affluent school districts in the state, is also one of the highest-performing and highest-rated districts in the state, which, I guess, is the union's fault, right? Conservative activists often make these bombastic claims about unions. Gimmelstein's claims here about the power of unions in Colorado are a bit overstated. According to the Conservative Independence Institute, only 38 of Colorado's 179 school districts actually have a master agreement with a union. In Colorado Springs, school district 11's conservative board recently ended the 50-year master agreement with the Colorado Springs Education Association, a significant victory for conservative education activists. The board's justification for ending the contract in D11 sounds a lot like the stuff you hear from conservative activists like Deborah Flora, whose 2022 film, Whose Children Are They?, repackage John Birch Society anti-communist fever dreams for our current crop of culture warriors. Here's D11's Jason Jorgensen discussing his vote to end their union contract during a December 11th board meeting.
...about unions. First, their political activity and how their use of their dues to advance partisan causes can be distasteful to some. They can injure some members' interests while advancing the interests of others, like Director Haley mentioned. When employees may need help, CSEA can prevent them from getting the help they need from other preferred sources other than the CSEA as the exclusive bargaining agent of D11. That's just not equitable. The union is not governed by any obligation to provide quality service, as we are duly-elected officials to the Board of Education. And so the exclusive representation of the CSEA with the district, because it's always how it's been, has to be discussed. Not only can unions hold the employees hostage, but also students and their parents. School choice, which is antithetical to the teachers' unions across the country, has been attacked time and time again, and they want your child to be forced to attend a school under the union's master agreement, even if that school is underperforming. Additionally, not all of teachers' CSEA dues stay local, as we've heard. Portions are sent to the state-level union, the CEA, and other portion to their dues goes to the NEA, the National Education Association. I even learned that last week we had an NEA representative here to help with the CSEA's display outside last week. These two organizations do not care about our D11 teachers or students like this board and future boards will. Instead, these two parent organizations have voted and approved pushing CRT, the 1619 Project, and defeating Colorado bills that expand educational choice and parental rights. Just last year, the CEA passed a resolution condemning capitalism. I know because I urged the board to pass a resolution against their resolution, because it was just bonkers thinking. A system built upon an individual's freedom to choose. Hmm. We can't have that, can we? Especially when it comes to education. And even more devastating to our district was the CEA's opposition to Senate Bill 22039 a few years back. This bill would have fully funded education to the tune of an additional $500 million, but because that bill also provided a measly $67 million towards school choice, the union could not support sending half a billion dollars to public schools that they claim are starving for funds. In just that last election we had, the union was also so against parents' rights to choose that they came out strongly against Amendment 80, which would have further guaranteed school choice in our state constitution.
For Gimmelstein, it's not just unions, but social-emotional learning that is the problem. For those who don't know, SEL, as it is called, is the process of developing the skills and abilities to understand and manage one's own emotions, build healthy relationships with others, set goals, make responsible decisions, and show empathy, essentially equipping individuals with tools to navigate social situations effectively and achieve personal success in life and school. Here's Gimmelstein's take on that.
And social-emotional learning is really... originally, you know, I think the intent was kind, like anti-bullying, teaching kindness, but it's really transitioned and it's really designed to disrupt the morals and values that you've instilled in your child.
It's really telling that so many conservative activists view curriculum that helps students show empathy as an attack on morals and values. Which morals and values exactly? Gimmelstein doesn't elaborate here, but in many cases, what conservative activists find objectionable is anything to do with LGBTQ people. Adologuing their existence, suggesting that they exist in our community, presuming to tell students that they have feelings and rights and should be treated with dignity and respect. This isn't exactly surprising. One of the ideas that has emerged from the so-called Christian nationalist right, particularly like the branch that's involved with Doug Wilson in Moscow, Idaho, is the idea that empathy is bad, actually, and there is a certain amount of hard-heartedness or animosity that people should develop for the good of society. Gimmelstein also discussed the lawsuits her group is filing against school districts with a number of national conservative anti-trans legal advocacy groups.
We've also been very fortunate and blessed to partner with several national law firms and some local attorneys here in the state of Colorado to really help families when they get in a situation where we have followed all of the policies, all of the steps, and the school district is continuing to disregard the parent's right to direct the education of their child and the upbringing of their child, and then for teachers as well. So, for example, we were able to facilitate a lawsuit with the America First Legal with a dean in Cherry Creek who was wrongfully terminated for stating that he was a proud American during CIA training. And this national law firm is taking a look at our incident reports that we put together. They're very comprehensive and working with us. It takes months to bring a lawsuit to fruition, but it's really happening. And with these national supporters, we're going to be holding school districts accountable. We're going to be holding superintendents, boards of education, principals, anyone that is pushing divisive ideology into the school. Another lawsuit that we were able to successfully help facilitate is against the 27J school district, and that is with the Center for American Liberty on behalf of the Doze, whose child was transitioned at school behind her parents' backs. And we're hopeful that through these lawsuits, we're raising awareness, we're going to be changing policy, we're going to be finding legislation that's unconstitutional and eliminating it. And then most recently, through our incident reporting tool, we received an incident report from a dad who has a 13-year-old son, and they... he is a divorced dad, and his ex-wife would like to transition their child. And part of their divorce agreement is an arbitrator to help with decisions that are difficult for them to make, and the arbitrator actually found with a mother that this child should start on hormone blockers and begin transition. And the dad was at a loss. He had no... his rights just completely stripped from him on his child's medical care and mental health care. And so we... they only had about 30 days to file in the Boulder District Court for an appeal on this decision. With all of the evidence that is available regarding the harm caused by these gender-affirming treatments, we just could not believe that an arbitrator would find that I'm going to, yeah, approve harming a child. And so thankfully, with the help of an attorney, Ann Gill, and attorney Scott Gesler, we were able to work with our partners at Do No Harm and put an appeal into Boulder District Court. And we're really hopeful for this dad that there will be a stay on... and they'll reverse the decision and protect his son. So, you know, we've been very fortunate to partner with all these great attorneys and law firms and national organizations like Do No Harm, as I said. There's other organizations like the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism and Parents Defending Education, and all of these networks, all of these organizations.
Nothing says support for schools like costly litigation, right? But it is important to note that Gimmelstein, like many conservative education activists, doesn't actually support schools.
We have an opportunity to bring common sense back into public education, and I think that's really important because we need to restore the trust. The truth of the matter, as much as I would love to say to everybody, "Get your kids out of these government-run schools", the reality is that there's just not enough availability of other choice options.
Speaking of lawsuits, members of the Colorado GOP are threatening a lawsuit against the Durango School District because of a policy that allows the display of the Black Lives Matter and Pride flags. Colorado GOP Vice Chair Hope Schepelman went on the Chuck and Julie Show recently to discuss their efforts.
In La Plata County is the school board here has really started to push the Black Lives Matter and the progressive Pride flag. And that is now being displayed within the school system in those classes. Now, it's a handful of classes, right? It's not the entire school, but as I have stated in my letter, look, we have one flag that the United States, you know, that we lay our heads down and we really... we respect. We believe that it is about freedom, unity, equality, all of the things that these, quote, "flags" are now trying to persuade our kids. At this point, we are not looking at... this is no longer good and evil. I think truly this is a way to indoctrinate our children, to have them hate their parents, hate the community, hate our flag, hate the United States. This definitely is a mental illness. And the mental illness part, this... teachers should be ashamed because what they are doing is they are weaponizing and really trying to look at these young kids, and they are using their vulnerability to promote this awful thing. Again, I'm not about... I'm not against gays. That is one thing I want to say specifically, but I am against the grooming of our children into these progressive transgender ideology.
And just in case you were wondering, no, she doesn't.
No, I don't have children. I don't have kids in the school district.
Darcie Shanning, the Colorado GOP Director of Special Initiatives, who recently announced her plans to run for state party chair, also weighed in, speaking out against trusted adults and suggesting that teachers want to sexually assault children.
I mean, the term trusted adult, as so many people are pointing out, that's the pathway to grooming. These kids are now growing up in a situation in their schools where they're being told that, you know, a trusted adult is who that they need to trust rather than their family members. And I'm sure Hope is gonna point this out. There is nobody that children should trust other than the adults in their family who their parents have designated. And that's why we're seeing an increase in sexual assaults in schools because people who want to sexually assault kids have policies that make it easier for them to assault these children.
Colorado's conservative activists have expressed a lot of concern recently over an incident in Jefferson County, where the school district's chief of schools, who's not a trans person, by the way, was under investigation for possession of child pornography before he committed suicide in Maryland. This is obviously absolutely concerning, and parents absolutely have a right to be concerned about incidents like these. But what Shanning and Schepelman are doing here is conflating LGBTQ people with child abuse, which is inaccurate and misleading. While conservative activists have prominently discussed the Jeffco incident, there is an interesting situation in the Montezuma-Cortez School District, which saw a number of conservative candidates run unopposed in 2023 that nobody seems to be talking about. This is a September 2024 story from the Durango Herald. On Tuesday, the Montezuma-Cortez RE1 School District held a special meeting where the allegations against Superintendent Tom Burris were addressed, as well as discussions on the mill levy. District Attorney Brad Miller gave a brief statement on the allegations against Burris and provided the notes from his statement to the Journal after the meeting. Miller expressed appreciation for the Cortez Police Department in their work to investigate allegations about a relationship between a teacher and a student. Burris is scheduled for arraignment in Montezuma County Combined Courts on September 25th, according to the police department. He was cited for allegedly violating Colorado statute 193304, persons required to report child abuse or neglect on August 12th. In this case, the public record informs us that two individuals, an ex-employee who was recently terminated for unlawful behavior and a member of the community who unsuccessfully ran for this board, made claims that the superintendent was made aware of inappropriate sexual behavior between a student and a staff member, Miller said, referring to the reporting party Jonathan J.J. Lewis. The public record does not include any allegations or claims that point to inappropriate sexual behavior or inappropriate sexual behavior or sexual behavior of any kind taking place, Miller said. The Journal spoke with police on Friday about this statement, and the department said, "We would prefer that you refer to the official redacted police report and investigation." According to the police report, former director of Human Resources Cindy Eldridge provided police with a video recording of a phone conversation with Burris. The recording was given to police on July 18th. Cynthia Eldridge provided a video recording of a phone conversation between herself and Harry Tom Burris, Detective Shane Fletcher said in his report. "I listened to the recording, and in the video, I heard Tom state that a parent of a student came in to report an inappropriate relationship between her son and a teacher." Probably not a trans person. "In the video, Tom said the parent reported her son had been over to the teacher's house, possibly drinking, and the parent was afraid the son was going to get laid at her house." Tom added he made the statement to the board in an executive session. "The call between Burris and Eldridge took place on June 13th around 10:00 PM, per the report, and Eldridge told the police she thought Burris was intoxicated. And, as we know, the mandatory reporting laws create a duty when the allegation or information is that a harm has occurred, not just because there is fear regarding a person's motives, Miller continued. Nothing presented so far in any context supports the idea that what was conveyed to Mr. Burris was a claim of actual bad behavior by a staff member." Miller went on to say that the termination of one of the employees amid the allegations had nothing to do with the conversation between the student's parents and Burris, noting that what was said to a staff member in a surreptitiously-recorded meeting did not have the appropriate basis for a DHS report. With these pieces of information from the public record, Miller advised the board to wait and see if more is uncovered in the investigation and public record before making any decision. "It remains the case that there is not a legal duty or policy basis for taking any form of disciplinary action. There is no reason to even consider that further, so I advise that we do not need an executive session or other action, Miller told the board. This is the extent of what I would have shared in an executive session, so I genuinely do not believe you have need for such a session." Lewis told the Journal on Wednesday that the community was concerned with the way things unfolded. "Any individual working for the school system is a mandatory reporter, and it is concerning that it took a mandatory reporter outside of the school system to expose this suspected behavior," Lewis said. Lewis added that the community was disappointed in the lack of discussion regarding the incident and that it was causing mistrust. "The community is disappointed that there was no discussion following Brad Miller's presentation," Lewis said. "This lack of action not only perpetuates the reputation of a passive board, but also underscores the urgent need for research and education." "While it has not been determined that abuse did take place, the lack of action when concern had been reported is problematic. Not only does this set precedent of disregarding any concern of neglect or abuse, but it continues to erode the trust that exists between this administration and our community," Lewis said. The article doesn't mention whether there was a Pride flag involved or not, unfortunately. This case has dragged on with a series of continuances. It was last reported that Burris will have a plea hearing sometime this month. One thing you might have noticed in that article is the presence of conservative education attorney Brad Miller, who is often featured in reporting on conservative education activism and school boards. A September 26, 2024 story on Burris's legal proceedings also quotes lawyer David Illingworth, a former Fourth Judicial District Deputy DA who served a controversial term on the Woodland Park School District Board. Illingworth is also representing Academy School District 20 board member Derek Wilburn in a defamation suit against parent Bernadette Guthrie, who he claims made false and defamatory statements about him on social media, at school board meetings, and to the district attorney's office. Coincidentally, Illingworth actually has experience prosecuting parents. While serving as a Woodland Park School District Board member, he used his position as a deputy DA to charge and try Samantha Peck over an incident involving Illingworth's wife. Peck was acquitted on all charges. The Wilburn case stems from an October 23 candidate forum where Wilburn read excerpts from books available in the D20 libraries that he found objectionable, most specifically the novel Push, which is about a young woman struggling with horrific abuse and living in poverty. It was the basis for the 2009 film Precious, which is incredibly hard to watch. I actually covered that event, and here is some of the audio to give you a general idea, as you might expect, trigger warning or whatever.
And I apologize in advance, ladies and gentlemen, for what you're about to hear. These are books currently available in District 20 school libraries. Please forgive me in advance. Title is Push, page 32. Daddy put his pee-pee-smelling thing in my mouth, my pussy but never hold me. I see me first grade, pink dress, dirty sperm stuff on it. About three months after baby's born, I'm 12, Miss Appleby's. Mama slapped me hard. Then she pick up a cast-iron skillet, and she hit me so hard I fall back on the floor. Then she kicks me in the ribs, and she say, "Thank you, Ms. Clarice Precious Jones, for fucking my husband, you nasty little slut."
Wilburn went on to read passages that included profanity, including the N-word, during the student-led candidate forum. Guthrie attended that event with her then-11-year-old daughter. Guthrie said that the reading from Push traumatized her daughter, and she alleges that reading sexually graphic material aloud in the presence of young children is tantamount to sexual abuse, which is what Wilburn and Moms of Liberty and D20 advocates and all of these other groups have claimed all along, right? Guthrie told the Colorado Springs Gazette, "Nothing I've said is untrue. I have said that I think Wilburn is dangerous to kids and that I don't want him near my daughter." Which, just pointing out, is exactly the kind of thing that conservative activists repeatedly say about LGBTQ people, right? The Gazette also notes Guthrie's, quote-unquote, "outrageously false allegations" according to the lawsuit document "have harmed Wilburn's reputation, causing him to lose personal and professional relationships and taken an emotional and physical toll." Wilburn is a longtime conservative activist who appeared on the serial defamation defendant Joe Altman's podcast network with a podcast titled Uncle Tom Talks. And he said in a private chat group regarding D20 constituents, "Every lesbian in El Paso County is going to show up at tomorrow night's board meeting breathing fire." to show up at tomorrow night's board meeting breathing fire." And he also characterized his political opponents in the school district as "satanic." But it's the parent expressing concern over an elected official's public statement that has harmed his reputation. Okay. This is the landscape of Colorado's conservative school boards. We could go on and on, but I think that's enough for today, right? This is the kind of stuff you find in the fever swamp, and you have to ask yourself, is this reality? Unlike Hope Schepelman, I do have kids, and unlike Darcy Shanning, mine go to public school. I talk to them about the things they learn in school, and much to my chagrin, none of them have been recruited into being gay communist transgender militants, and this is a serious issue. If George Soros finds out that I have straight, white, cisgender sons, I could lose my job, okay? It's a big deal, or worse. And look, if unions really did have all the power conservatives pretend they do, the political landscape for school boards, which have been skewing increasingly conservative in the last few election cycles, would look radically different, don't you think? When you talk to union members, the things that they want out of a master agreement are simply guardrails between them and the administrators, who, as we discussed, are appointed by boards made up of various political leanings, right? They just want some stability and some security and guarantees around working conditions and planning periods, and to make sure that their lunch isn't gonna just get disrupted at the last minute. Well, if you've enjoyed this podcast, please like, comment, and subscribe. Tell a friend about us, and keep up with our ongoing coverage on coloratetimesrecorder.com. If you appreciate our coverage, please consider making a donation to our nonprofit newsroom. Our reporting efforts are made possible by the support of listeners and readers like you. Thanks for tuning in, and stay safe out there.